Fund for salaries and benefits, contract for Johnson Controls for Phase Two of the Moncarlen Waste Water Treatment Program membrane replacement, an upgrade project for the Department of Water Resources in the amount of $1,181,526, travel request for the Department of Water Resources in the Colby Court, a payment to integrity appraisal for the 2017 revaluation project for the auditor's office, the amount of $34,178, payments to Vista SG for implementation and annual maintenance and software support for CSI's redaction software that's for the Commonwealth Court totaling $22,840.37, and payments to EnviroCom Construction to pay requests twelve and twelve A for contract B for the Department of Water Resources Thompson Township Suya Project totaling $173,067.67.
Make them open.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Flair?
Aye.
Mr. Flair?
Screen's back. Think he's having a gristle.
Until the maple falls.
(laughing).
Well, the final lizard will come.
(inaudible).
I like to know when the maple falls stops. Temperature back and forth, I don't think so. Anybody who's doing mapleing right now?
I think what the tree's kind of.
Is it made as a flow stop yet?
Well, it would still be flowing now because we've got back into the freezing weather, but that long warm spell, you know, ten days ago, throughout the season, it stopped flowing then, the trees are budding, and that that's it.
Uh-uh. That means the maple syrup is going to drop, I'm imagining that.
I don't know. It's a it's an international market, so maybe some of the reaches did well, we don't know.
Interesting. The Western Reserve, or the Land Conservancy is up, who's representing?
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name's Chris Zell, I work with Western Reserve Land Conservancy. I'm a company of the McDonald family here today. They own the Hilltoppers Farm that's located on Auburn Road in Munson Township. The farm is subject to the resolution that's before you today that would allow the McDonald family to make an application to the State Farmland Preservation Program. I know McDonald family has prepared some comments, so with your permission, I'd like to turn the floor over to them, but I am available for questions.
I'm Gordon McDonald. I'm starting spokesman by virtue of being the oldest and probably the least involved in things here, but this is my brother Gary. He runs the home farm now and has for his whole life, and his wife Teeny in the back, and their daughter Tessa, and granddaughter Robin, and son Nate. And they have other siblings that are gone. We also have that were in our family, my sister Pam Blair, who lives on the home place in Munson, and Paula Peck, who also lives on the home place. There's two houses on the original hundred acres there. A little bit of history, because I think that's relevant to why we're making the request to help the farm stay in agriculture land into the foreseeable future. I was really fortunate to grow up with a great-grandfather that was born right after the Civil War, who lived until I was in high school, and so lots of stories of the old days. He remembers remember hearing telling of seeing seeing the land cleared there in Munson when he was a young boy, of having Indians come back into the area and crying over the graves of their ancestors that they saw there. So, and then the next generation was the, well, he was Clifford Varney, and then there was our grandfather Paul Varney, and those guys put together the little farm there in Munson of the Hundred Acres, and they did that through the twenties and in the Depression. And then that was eventually passed to our mom, who obviously played you know well, and her brother. I remember as a kid, her brother had come back from World War II and started farming on the land there, and had a quite accomplished, or a Guernsey herd, milked cows back in the days when everybody milked cows in Georgia County, but that didn't work because he married a girl in the war from El Paso who couldn't stand Ohio. And I remember the trauma of the family of seeing the Guernseys loaded up on railroad cars in Paintsville and sent to El Paso, which didn't work out very well. But at that point, our family, our parents, Vivian and Jack, began took over the farm operations, and now we're into the fifties and sixties, the era of when we grew up. And I, you know, I've either plowed or mowed or walked every probably square yard of that place and deeply love it. I didn't realize until long after I had moved from here what a unique piece of property that was. We hunted and literally lived in the woods between Bee Road and 322 and Auburn Road and Tuttle Tuttle Swamp, that was our growing up place. And having now moved away and realizing we just had a really a unique little niche and time and time and space to grow up in, and just a virtual wildlife preserve and forestry area there, my brother makes maple syrup today, and just a very special piece of property that I love and would like to see preserved. Little bit of real real brief history myself. I went to Ohio State and graduated agriculture college. My actually, my first real job was working for the county extension service here in Burden with Melon Schuler, who probably nobody here even knows, but he was a legendary extension agent, and that led me to also be an extension agent with four H in Columbia and later Crawford County. So, those things took us away from here, and I live in Delaware now, and I have four grown children, and this happens in families, you go your different directions, and I know my wife and I are not going to come back here, and none of my kids are. So, we're looking for a how to pass my share of the farm to my brother Gary's family and to so we can deal with the estate planning now, rather than have our kids do it in twenty years or however long the Lord gives me to live. And I've seen this conservation program as a way to help me pass my share to my brother's family, who is interested in staying here, interested in continuing the farming, and also meet my goals of seeing that our farm that I grew up loving and love today not become a housing development like we saw happen to our great-grandfather's farm across the road from us on Auburn Road and everything that's happened there in our neighborhood in Munson. So, my goal is to pass my share of the farm onto my brother and his family, and, you know, be in the same time be fair to be financially, but say a vehicle here that can do that. But so that's a little bit of my my history, that I I'm kind of a minor player in what the future is going to be, but I I'm very concerned and want to see that maintained as agriculture farmland, which I'd like to see continued for generations. So, my brother Gary's going to talk about what their operation is right now. So, Gary?
Okay. Well, I'm Gary.
Good morning, Gary.
Good morning. Like I said, Gordon said that my wife and granddaughter and daughter and son, thanks for having us. What what we what we do now is is we farm, and like Gordon said, we want to keep we want to keep farming, and we fully intend to. All of my family is interested, nobody directly working full-time with with me now, but everybody working part-time, even grandchildren in the sugar house, and so, and that's what we do. We make maple syrup. Our main crop now is hay, and has been for my entire career, hay, beef cattle, and maple syrup. Those are Armenian tums, and and that that will continue as far as I can see right now, but we we can do a lot of, the land is suitable for any kind of agriculture. We've we've done retail sweet corn, that's a that's a good crop for our region, and that's that's one of the issues about this, what we what we have here. This this farm is right in the heart of Munson where we can produce those kind of things for the residents, and they really like it. When we're producing something, corn, beef, hay, I've been hauling a lot of hay to the Amish community, and I've noticed out in that region, a lot of the farms are broken up, and they're not even able to produce as much hay as they need, where so it's sort of almost unusual to me that I'm hauling hay into Middlefield and Windsor and Parkman, but I am. And so, that's what we're doing and what we intend to continue doing. This is my son Nate, and he's going to tell a little more about the program.
So, yes, thanks, thank you for for considering this, and my dad takes hay to the to the on his deliveries, he my my older daughter, my oldest daughter Meadow, her favorite thing to do is to go with him and stack hay in somebody's barn. So, so we we are really, really devoted to this, to this farm, to this land, and we see this farmland program, the state's farmland program, as an opportunity to allow these goals to be accomplished in a way that will allow us to keep that farm in private ownership, keep it on the tax rolls, in CAUV status, and and give us an opportunity to create this succession plan that's good for the good for the land, good for the the family, and and good for the community. We did have the opportunity to present this resolution to Munson Township trustees, and Irene McMulling is here today, and we were we were really grateful that they gave us unanimous support and, you know, some enthusiastic comments about one of the things that that somebody mentioned before, that it's a scenic property too, and and good for the good for Munson to have a farm right there in the center. So, I just want to to go ahead and and, you know, ask you, ask for your support, and that's what that's basically what the Commissioner's role in this is, is to go ahead and say that you'll okay are submitting an application to the state's farmland program. And with that, we'll be able to go forward with our application. It's due on April fifteenth, so it would be wonderful if this could be resolved as soon as possible. And we do, again, really appreciate this this support and this opportunity to talk to you, and would be happy to answer any questions. Chris Zell from the Land Conservancy would be happy to answer questions too, and bear will, and I think that's it.
So, Nate, I've got a few questions.
Sure.
Do you work for the Western Reserve Land Conservancy?
I do not.
Okay. I had talked to Gary and Gordon at Lake, you have a son that.
My brother Pete does.
Oh, Pete, okay.
Yeah. He's my younger brother.
And so, this farm has been in your family for a long time, and we had a lengthy conversation in my office about what the objectives, what the goals were, and so on and so forth.
Right.
I'm still a little bit, I still have an open question, that is, the farm is in your family, you don't need the Western Reserve Land Conservancy or any conservancy for that matter, to protect your farmland. You protect your farmland. Nobody can buy it, nobody can subdivide it, nobody can do anything but farm on it as long as you own it and as long as you control it. And so, what is the need for the Conservancy easement? I'm a little confused with this.
It's a good question. So, the the need and the what the program, the state's program allows farmers to do is just the kind of succession plan that Gordon was talking about. You know, my my uncle and my dad have this this need to to make that transfer to the next generation, and in order to do that, like just as Gordon said, and of course he's humble about it, but but he does need to, you know, receive his value from that inheritance and that property, and this is a way to accomplish that succession transition through the funding that the the program provides, to allow us to keep that land together. That's one of the things that that happens, is that land, it disintegrates and and is separated and segregated, and just like my dad was saying with the middle the properties in Middlefield, one of the reasons that that may be happening is that it's being chopped down. And this allows us some some funding to prevent that from happening, to to give us that succession planning in such a way that we can keep that sixty acres together. And I don't know if you have, there was a map, I think, attached to the resolution that shows how this L shape is already around a house, and that house was split off in order to allow my Aunt Paula to have have her share, and another portion was split off to allow my Aunt Pam to have her share on which she built a house. And so, this combining these two interests through the use of these these funds, these state funds, gives us a chance to keep that farm together. And just as my dad said, if the if the farms are are separated, it becomes very hard to continue to farm them the same way, maple syrup and hay in particular, you see the the map. Does that does that help?
Well, it helps. It still doesn't answer the question, you own the property, you don't need taxpayer dollars to help you to keep the property together. I have a number of concerns. I've been doing research on these conservation easements and the impact of them to our society. There's a bigger picture here going on than what is than the average person might know. I took an oath to defend this Constitution of Ohio and the United States. The very first in the Bill of Rights, in the very first page of the Constitution, it says this, that all men by their nature free and independent and having certain inalienable rights, among these are enjoying, defending life, liberty, and acquiring, possessing, and protecting private property. When you put a third party, a Conservancy, Western Reserve or other, because there's a lot of Conservacies out there, in a contract, that property is no longer controlled by you, it is now controlled by them. This is not about protecting property, this is about controlling property. And anybody that might disagree with that, this is a short list of the conservation easements that have acquired through our county records office. Every one of those contracts indicate control. If you look at the Whedon property, which is on Parkman, and you look at their ability to be able to farm that property, it is under very tight constraints and controls. If you're a farmer, you can't put in a barn, other than the ones already there, the existing barns. You can't put in a rote, you can't cut a tree, you can't do certain things on the property. I'm not sure you, and and you agreed to this when you signed a contract, to give up rights. You are giving up many of the constitutional rights that our founding fathers and so and so forth fought to defend, the right to be able to do. I'm still flummoxed a little bit at why we would want to do that, because you own the property. You don't need somebody to protect your property.
Well, first of all, this particular program allows a great deal of flexibility in terms of the kind of farming that we have. In fact, my dad could, he could do lumber, he can do anything in terms of what crops he's planting. The the easement that's put on this this farm will not restrict those things, the decisions will be up to him, and he met with a person from the.
The NRCS.
NRCS.
Representing.
Resources. Saying, and then talked to them about about the farm, about the property, about what would be allowed and what wouldn't, and the essential bottom line there was, so long as he's not doing anything that would be inappropriate farming practices, such as farming on steep slopes where the soil will erode to the point where all the topsoil's gone, or, you know, very aggressive, you know, just like Gordon said, he was a conservation or a county extension agent, the kinds of things that no one wants wants farmers to be doing, those are the kinds of things that this particular easement program would prevent. But otherwise, he has a tremendous amount of flexibility, including the possibility of reserving a homestead site that where you could build, so there's the possibility of building on the property within within certain parameters, but again, that that possibility is there. And so, our goals are to allow to continue this this farming practice that we've we've done for for decades and generations, and, you know, our kids do want to farm. Our our I we Tessa is currently farming, doing some chickens, doing some things like that, and as far as your question about is, why would we want to restrict that, there's also that it's a practical question, and that's why I went to the question of, well, in terms of succession and in terms of how do we make this possible, this is a way to do it. Farmers all over the state of Ohio are taking advantage of this of this program to make their farms viable going forward into the next into the next generation or into the future. And it's so it's a way that that these that agriculture can be supported through the state, through the through the Commissioner's offices, and and that's happening in in counties all over the state. The easements that you're pointing to, they may be conservation easements, they may be different kinds of easements, just like we all know, there are easements that allow people to share a driveway. So, there are many different kinds of easements, but this particular program creates an agricultural easement that is specifically designed to promote agriculture. Ohio, Georgia County's, you know, huge industry, maple syrup, you know, they've been they've been making maple syrup their whole life, can be able to continue to do that. So, the restrictions on this are are, I think, quite quite minimal, where it's an apples and oranges kind of comparison, one easement to another. This these kinds of easements through this program are agricultural and are designed to allow farmers to keep doing.
I have a couple of questions for you. I spoke with you, I don't know, a few weeks back. First of all, the program that this program was voter approved in two thousand and then reapproved in two thousand and eight, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the role of the Western Reserve Land Conservancy is you is that they have to have an agency in the county or an agency that makes the application, the property owner cannot directly make the application, and that is, to my understanding, the extent of the Western Reserve Conservancy's role?
Correct. So, we serve as what they call the local sponsor, and we serve as a local sponsor for, I think, seventeen counties within our service area. And the way the program's set up, again, it's not our program, it's a state program focused on farmland preservation, is that a landowner doesn't make application directly to the state, they have to work with a local sponsor who does that on their behalf. The easement that we've been talking about is actually a state easement, it is not what it's separate from what an easement like we would do for someone else for natural areas, for instance. So, we hold different types of easements as a Land Conservancy, and we have easement language that we've drafted based on other templates and state law, et cetera, but this easement languages in the easement is generated by the state of Ohio Farmland Preservation Program.
Lastly, this parcel, as I understand it, is contiguous to land that's already in this program, is that is that correct? Don't you own, and the neighbor's farm as well, the one that, I don't know, the one you farmed for the other family or whatever?
It is contiguous, yes, and we do own some land correctly east and north of this, myself and my wife, that is in a conservation program.
And and in fact, my sister lives on that on that land, that land is directly to the north of this land, and so that's that's another feature of this that will allow us to to continue to farm through the next generations, having having that connection. So, yes, and the program, this particular this particular easement is is based on the state's recognition that agriculture was agriculture is really important to Ohio, so let's create an easement for that, promote that, let's promoting agriculture.
So, Irene, I'll come back to you in a second. The gentleman from Western Reserve.
Yes, Chris, sorry.
So, what is your financial benefit, what's the Western Reserve's financial benefit in this regard?
There is none.
Really? I've not seen a transaction yet through the through the.
We don't receive any administrative fees for this or anything.
Are you going to receive a donation at the end?
We have not discussed one. I mean, that's certainly, and I mean, we're a nonprofit, and donations certainly serve our mission, but we have not discussed, I've not had a conversation with the family or has it ever been.
The in our original conversations that we had, there was no contract drafted yet, and I understand the distinction, trust me, I've spent hours and hours looking at conservation easements, so I know very clearly the differences in easements. We actually have two properties in the county, we own, the county owns two pieces of property that have conservation easements on them. I can tell you that our hands are tied. We cannot do what's best for the citizens of this county because irresponsible Commissioners, I think you're, that's my opinion, irresponsible Commissioners tied our hands on those property and put a conservation easement on them, we can't do anything with that property. It's that they're going to sit there fallow in perpetuity unless we can find a way to break those easements. I was approached by a farmer, knowing that we were going to have this conversation, who's got his home in a conservation easement, that he's trying to sell it, and he's having a hard time selling it because of the constraints in the conservation easement. He didn't want me to mention his name, I asked if he'd actually come in here, he wasn't willing to do that. But so, there's a dark side to the conservation easements, because even the Western Reserve material, another conservation, and a target of Western Reserve Land Conservancy, because it's in conservation easements, it's it's the nature of conservation easements, they negatively impact the property values. When you negatively impact the property values, you now have a problem in the future, it either being able to sell the property and or from a tax income standpoint, from accounting perspective, our county tax income's going to be affected eventually. It doesn't happen right away, it's a slow rot, so to speak. I believe that we're going to start seeing some of that. So, that that raises real concerns for me. We actually have two properties in the county. We own, the county owns two pieces of property that have conservation easements on them. I can tell you that our hands are tied. We cannot do what's best for the citizens of this county because irresponsible commissioners, I think, that's my opinion, irresponsible commissioners tied our hands on those property and put a conservation easement on them. We can't do anything with that property. It's that they're going to sit there fallow in perpetuity unless we can find a way to break those easements. I was approached by a farmer, knowing that we were going to have this conversation, who's got his home in a conservation easement, that he's trying to sell it and he's having a hard time selling it because of the constraints in the conservation easement. He didn't want me to mention his name. I asked if he'd actually come in here today and wasn't willing to do that. But, so there's a dark side to the conservation easements because even the Western Reserve material, another conservation, I'm going to target Western Reserve Land Conservancy because it's in conservation easements, it's the nature of conservation easements. They negatively impact the property values. When you negatively impact the property values, you now have a problem in the future in either being able to sell the property and/or from a tax income standpoint, from a county perspective, our county tax income is going to be affected eventually. It doesn't happen right away. It's a slow rot, so to speak. I believe that we're going to start seeing some of that. So that, that raises real concerns for me, that we're impacting the fundamental fabric, the fundamental premise that this country was founded on, and that is private property. You have an organization such as the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, who is a nonprofit, unaccountable organization, involved with this property in perpetuity, forever and ever. So, as I understand it from Gordon and Gary, and by the way, God bless you, I love farmers, I love farms, there's, I would love to protect farms all day long. My belief is the best way to protect a farm is to sell it to a farmer, because they will be vicious in protecting their property and their rights to be able to farm. But, but my long-term concern is that we're somehow going to degrade the concept of private property without the control of some governmental organization. You mentioned the, and you will admit to the fact that when you put this into a conservation easement, it will be put into a farm plan. In order, in other words, you will farm according to a specific plan that you provide to the NRCS. The NRCS can change its rules, its rules at whim. Today, it's okay for you to farm any particular way. Tomorrow, because the government decides that they don't like those farming practices, they can change that farming practice on you, and you have no control over that. And so, you know, there's a lot of things that get wrapped into this that the public doesn't comprehend or understand because they don't spend time looking at this. Blake said that this passed twice. Yes. Oftentimes, the citizens are sold to bill goods and they don't understand that you hear all the, all the color commentary, oh, we're going to save farms, which all of us want to do, it's how you save farms. Do we protect the basic fundamental private property concept at the same time we're saving farms? Or do we give that up? Karl Marx wanted, the very first thing that he wanted to destroy in terms of, of, you know, moving into a Marxist society, is the destruction of private property rights. Private property rights are so important, private property rights are so important that we should, you know, be careful about how we treat those.
And it is going to be private, privately owned by us.
It's controlled by-
Et cetera, that one piece.
It's not controlled by the Western Reserve Conservancy, Skip. Now, you're wasting everybody's time.
Now, Blake, I'm sorry that you-
No, no, you be quiet for a moment.
I'm sorry, Blake. This is important and I'm not going to let you override this.
Yeah, it's important.
Have you read one of these contracts? Have you read a contract?
Wait a minute. I read the contract. Listen to me.
You have not read a contract?
I would, Skip, Skip, private property rights can only, it can't go just one way, like you say. They have private property rights as well, as the future people have.
Absolutely, they have a right.
And the world, the voters of Ohio approved this program, but Skip says, no, they were wrong. So Skip is right and the rest of the people are wrong. And, and that's the problem I'm having here. Let's bring this to a vote and let's vote on it. Let Ms. McMullin have her say.
Thank you. I'm Irene McMullin, one of the Munson Township trustees, and I, I know you're aware that the Munson Township trustees passed a unanimous resolution in favor of this plan. I just would like to make an appeal for local control. The Munson Township trustees had a meeting and carefully considered this resolution and got public input. And we've done a long-range land use plan, and this property came up as, as one of the pieces of property that is a signature in our township. And we believe that maintaining it will maintain our tax base and the character of our community. Now, I understand that in other places, things like family farms aren't a valuable asset to the community and contribute to the tax base. In Munson Township, the rural quality is an important piece of our character. And I understand that the commissioners and the county have control over our, the assets of Munson Township. But this is a, this is a case where the voters of Munson and the trustees of Munson have looked at our tiny community and said that this is an asset and a program that's worthy of being placed in this program. And I hope that the commissioners will, will take the wishes of our local community into account.
And my dad wants it to be private.
I don't know how to make it, my thoughts on it perfectly clear, but I fully understand that we're putting a restriction on it. We're limiting, limiting the land to permanent farmland. That's a restriction. I'm happy to put on that land. And each, as each generation passes, that, that requirement will pass with those generations. And, and that's okay. Each, let's say it has to, the land should in the future have to be sold out of the family for some reason. The buyer will understand that this is farmland. And that's what I want. That's no different than if, and we, we talked about this, if we decide, and actually, there's, there's finances involved here, where it's to help me buy Gordon out. That's where the finances come in. That's where this, what we're talking about here is some money. But the, the future buyers and owners of that land will understand that that's farmland right in that, as a little island in that, in Munson Township. It will be used as that, and everybody, I think the, the community will be, will benefit by it. But if we were to, if Gordon and I decided, well, we would need to settle this by subdividing it for, to divide up our inheritance, that's a property decision we've made and that land will no longer be farmland, ever. And so I'm not afraid of that restriction. I want it to stay farmland. And I, I don't know how to put that out clearly.
Other decisions are-
But the buyers, it's, it's like if you sell mineral rights or something like that, that goes with farm. That goes with the land. It's that way from then on. Maybe that's not a good idea either, but that's in existence, that concept. I don't know, I just, I'm not afraid of the idea. And I did talk to the people at the NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service. Because the state requires that we have a farm plan in this, to be in, to apply for this program, we have to have a farm plan. Those farm plans are so broad and so all-inclusive, just proper agriculture. And there's no reason that the government in the future would want to make that, that plan not be common sense agriculture. They're going to, the citizens in the country should, should and would correct that if the government was trying to somehow distort the, the use of agriculture or something. I mean, I have that much faith in the state, state government. And it's, it is, it's the state government agriculture.
Right, Mr. Buckles. And can you state who you are?
Ed Buckles, Shorey Township. I have no particular interest in this, I'm here for other reasons, but it strikes me, Mr. Claypool, you have a logical inconsistency in your argument that people have property rights and they can't limit those property rights on their own property. I, I'm confused by how you say they have an absolute right to their property and to do with it as they want. And here they want to do something and recognize hurting the value for resale, recognize what they're doing, and yet you want to limit their property rights. That, that doesn't seem consistent to me.
It's not inconsistent at all. Let me explain. If they have a right to do anything they want to with their property, if they wanted to make a deal with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy after they walk out of this room, then they're free to do that. It's not every day. And, and by the way, I just want to be very clear, I'm all about farmland. I love farmland. There's, there's no interest in my part at all in taking or having that farmland subdivided into two apartments or housing or whatever the case happens to be. But we were involved in this process. We're involved in this process because we're being asked to approve tax dollars. Now you've changed the equation a bit. Now you're asking the citizens of the state of Ohio to be a part of this process, and we, the county commissioners. And as such, I'm not going to sit here and rubber stamp things, that's not what I do. I weigh what the impact is to the county, long-term impact for the county, for the taxpayers, for what we're doing in terms of the principles that I've sworn an oath to defend, Constitution and so on and so forth. There's a lot of factors here that come to play, including the future wealth or health of our income situation from a tax base standpoint. So there's a lot of factors to take into account. They're certainly free to make any decision they want to, and I, and I would never want to interfere with that. But when you involve me, then I'm asked to make a judgment call, and that's what I'm attempting to do, to make the best judgment call that I can, based on this conversation. That's why this conversation is so important. You don't make it quickly, easily, without discussion. You have these robust discussions so you can make a good decision. And so I hope that answers your question. Go ahead, Irene.
I just wanted to point out a concern in terms of the Munson tax base. Obviously, if there were another permitted use, like a resident, residential subdivision on that property, it would cost the residents of our township more in terms of resources and, and probably result in increased requirements in terms of local government assets. And so to the extent that Munson Township can make a plea for keeping our taxes a little lower, having property in agricultural use, obviously, that's that.
So in ten years, fifteen years, or whenever the, Gordon, I'm hoping that you're, it would always stay in your family, whether it's Gary, Gordon, Nate.
Nate.
Nate. What's your, do you have any kids?
I have three kids, three kids.
Okay, so whether you pass it down to them, so on and so, let's say fifty, a hundred years from today, let's hope that that farm always stays in your family. But at some point in time when that farm is not in your family anymore and somebody now acquires that property, who knows what the situation is going to be in our society a hundred years from today? And we've just now stolen the opportunity from that generation to be able to make the best decision in their time. That's another part to this whole thing. And so I don't know how I think about that. I don't know that, that that's a, if that's a good idea or a bad idea. I, you know, nobody took my right away to be, be able to own my five acres piece of dirt, and trust me, I would never put a conservation easement on it because I don't want somebody looking over my shoulder telling me that I can't cut a tree down or burn a, you know, bush or whatever the case happens to be. And so, you know, that's a whole part of this equation. What are we doing to the fabric of our society as we, we change this? You know, the whole property rights equation. And it is, if you look at the contracts, you're, you are now subservient to the Western Reserve Land Conservancy relative to the contractual language.
With respect to that one thing.
You're taking a second, you're taking a second position on that, on that, on that property.
And everything, and the land is still held privately. It's still, it's still our land, and it's a decision that we have made, that, you know, my dad and my uncle have made as private property owners who want agriculture to be the center of Geogee County and who have spent, I mean, I mean, my dad has spent his whole life farming this land, his whole life.
And there's nobody to stop you then. You can do that, Terry, without the contract.
And if there isn't a, if, what the state and what the people of Ohio by, by, by creating this, this program have done is try to help farmers in Ohio to continue their farming practices through the generations and through the, and into the future, to make, make agriculture the best opportunity, just like we want it. And as Irene said, diverse land is, in a, in a community, in a township, is a good thing. And this is a way to, to preserve that. I think that, that the bigger picture, you know, this, the philosophical argument around, around property rights, you can take it as far as you want. And you're, I mean, Karl Marx is over here and there's, there's this side over here. But what I'm, I would just submit is this isn't anywhere near Karl Marx. This is, this is a state program that has been approved and is, is designed for a particular thing, to allow, and allow a particular thing by restricting a small property right that the private landowner can choose to restrict freely and by their own choice as they, as they work on their own private interests and how they can, they can provide those for their future and for the future generations of their family.
I would just like to say that the very thing that, that you're saying you fear so much, I understand that, that fear or that concern, but that very thing that, well, a hundred years from now, this is going to be tied to, to farmland. I think, unless we have terrible national disasters, Munson will still be residential. It's not, Cleveland is not going to overwhelm, the house, the homes that are in Munson now will come and go, but it will still be residential. And right there in that region, especially a hundred years from now, it'll prob, some farmland will probably really be welcome.
And raise the property values than everyone else.
Yeah, that's one, we know we're losing value here. We, we fully understand that. We're in this, this program wouldn't compensate us anywhere close to what development prices would be, what current land value, what, what the, the land would appraise for. We know, we're, we're allowing that to go down. I'm not worried about that because I want to see it remain farmland. And I think, you, I guess you just mentioned that maybe farmland will be worth more than residential land someday. I'm not, we're not speculating on that. That's, that may or may not be true. But I'm not at all afraid of, each, each owner of that land will understand this is a, this is a restriction. It has to remain farmland. And that's fine. There's nothing, I would consider it a mistake if my, my granddaughter back there, Robin, decided, oh, we don't need, we don't want to farm anymore if, if there wasn't this program on the land. Robin might be the owner someday, say, well, we, we don't really want to farm anymore. We do need some money, let's sell this land. If it, if it was, if there wasn't that restriction, she could do that, residential then, no longer farmland, and it never will be again. I'm not afraid to put that restriction on Robin. Then she can't do that, what I would consider a mistake in this case. That's, I think, our property right now. And she would be, yes, she would be tied to that. And that's okay.
If you're looking for a rugged individualist, you have one.
Well, I can see that, hopefully, Skip.
So, so, you know, as far as the political concerns, and that's where I'm, I'm just saying, this is a particular case. Here we are, we, we have a small farm, we have a state program that, that helps us to keep that small farm and to keep that agricultural tradition that we have going, and we have economic reasons that are present now, private property interests that, that all come to the fore. And that together creates a special set of circumstances for this particular property. This is, this is not the whole conversation. This is one piece of property that it fits squarely within a program that, that has been established and reestablished and reasserted and is for farmers. And I know that you guys have, 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 have supported agriculture and, and, you know, your, your, your position is that you're in favor of supporting agriculture.
You know, and one more thing, and I'll shut up. Because I do support farming. My, my concern is government-controlled farming. I had the opportunity, if you will, to see, to travel to China, back during when they were outwardly openly communist, they're kind of behind the closed doors communists today. And so they had farms, they don't own private land, they're allowed to exist on the land and farm on that land, and the government controls how they farm. There's a parallel here. The more property we put into control of a non-accountable organization, the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, the Chagrin River Partnership, all of these conservancy organizations are not accountable. They are, you can't look at their finances, you can't tell who runs the organization, you can't tell the salaries for the organizations, and they play conservancy easements like a deck of playing cards. So this is a whole list of conservancies that are changing hands. So the Western trades that to the Chagrin River Partnership, who might trade it to- So the Western trades that to the Chagrin River Partnership, who might trade it to another one, there's a dozen of these things within here. And so, I don't know what the reason is, because they don't do their business, but I know that there's a lot of things going on in the scenes. My fear is, and you're right, it is a fear, that we're changing the fabric somehow, little drips and drabs, little drops, we're changing how private property rights work in this country. And I know I have a president, who I believe grew up as a Marxist, he lived in a Marxist country, his ideology, his philosophy is a little mixed up and confusing to me, and he did say that we're going to transform this country. So I add all those things up, and I say, wow, that's a little concerning to me, that we're starting now, and we willingly, voluntarily give up our private property rights, and you admit to giving up some of those rights, that's what a conservancy easement is about. There's a set of bundled rights in the legal parlance, you're giving up a part of those bundle of rights. Did we sever the oil and, or the oil and gas rights, mineral rights on your property? Are you giving that to the Western Reserve Land Conservancy?
No.
No? Okay, good. Then you're smart in doing that, because oftentimes, people are doing that. And we're also, we as commissioners are being asked to sign a blank check, because we have no idea, at the end of the day, we're approving something, we haven't seen the contract, we don't know what it is that you guys have signed off on and haven't signed off on.
All you're being asked to do is to, to let us, let us submit the application. That, that's it. You're just allowing us to give, giving us the green light to submit an application to this program. Then the, the, the review of all of the pieces and parts of that application will occur at the state level, which is the program that the voters of Ohio have approved representatives who have created that, and then passed it, passed it again, passed it again. And, I mean, the, the relationship between my dad's, I mean, making hay on this sixty acres, and making maple syrup in that woods, and President Obama's upbringing is very, extremely attenuated, to say the least. And, and this is about his maple syrup, his, his walking on that land, his whole life, and us continuing to do that. It's not about President Obama. And if it was, the voters in the United States, the voters in Munson Township, the voters in Geoghegan County could correct that over time, could say, this has gone too far, we're, we're scaling it back. So there's a, the, the democracy is a beautiful thing, right? Like, the Constitution that you have, and I, I'm, I'm a lawyer. I understand the bundle of sticks, and I understand the devotion to the Constitution of Ohio and in the United States of America. It's a beautiful thing, because it's flexible enough to, to self-correct. And so, your concerns are, you, you have, you have concerns, you have the right to have concerns, but these things can be corrected over time, through the democratic process. We have a, we have a beautiful system that allows for that. This particular property is a particular situation, that we have an opportunity to support agriculture here in Geoghegan County through this. Munson Township has, has, in my lifetime, I'm forty years old, in my lifetime, I have seen development, 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 and there is very little farming in Munson that's active farming that's going on anymore. When I went to Munson School, I was one of the only kids that grew up on a farm. I think that that was, that was a great thing. I want my kids to be in that, in that situation. We, Munson needs, needs that, to preserve that rural character. That's part of the, the beauty of that community. And it, and this, this farm, I think this is partly what Irene was, was alluding to, is that by having a farm in the center of Munson Township, the property values for everyone else around that farm, they go up. So yes, when this particular property sells in the future, it may not sell for the same price, but every property around it may get a higher price because of that, because of the, the character, the rural character of the community. I, I drive the tractor in the, in the, in the summertime, raking hay, and I have my, my daughter on my lap. And people stop, I, this actually happened, people stopped on the road and took a picture of us, because it's, you know, rural ambiance, the, the fact that there, this is part of the community. We're, we're coming forward and saying, we, as private owners of this land, we want to continue to privately own this property. We're not donating it to the park, we're not giving control to the government, we're keeping it private, it's for us. But in order to do that, we've got to, we've got to involve a state program that gives us a little money to keep that going. And by doing that, we can keep that benefit for the entire community over time, and we're committed to that.
I wish you could do that without the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, Sam and Partner, and that whole deal.
Well, if, I think, the way I understand it, if, if we were in this, another county, another county, maybe the Soil Conserv, it's probably, I don't know if it's always some kind of government thing, but maybe the Soil Conservation Service.
Yeah, there's one local sponsor, it's WRLC, one local sponsor in Geoghegan County. If there was another one, we'd be happy to work with them. If, that, the fact that WRLC is involved, I mean, I, I will say, just for the record, personally, I like WRLC, and I think that what they do is good work. That's different, though, and that's, and I'm not going to get into that, because I think that's that big-picture argument, the big philosophical argument, that, that this isn't about that. But if we were, if we could work with another local sponsor, we'd be happy, happy to. The Extension Service, you know, this is a State of Ohio Agricultural Department, ODA, Ohio Department of Agriculture. It's an agriculture program. It's not a, it's, it's not an environmentalist program, it's an agriculture program.
Well, we could have that debate, because in essence, it is, but we, I don't want to take your time with that debate.
Yes, I, I feel that I.
There's more moving parts behind the scene on agricultural programs than the average person has ever spent time looking at. And I don't want to bore everybody with all of that. So it is related to an environmentalist program, it's related to a lot of things, and you see where the, where the root of that program came from, and we allowed that to happen. There's little poison pills in stuff that's going on around us today. I mean, you talked about being able to correct the situation, you can. You know how hard it is to correct an out-of-control EPA? Our EPA is a disaster. We've got an out-of-control Department of Education. We've got to correct that at some point, and it will, and hopefully, we'll wake up, and we'll, and we'll decide to correct that. But I guess, that's where, that's where it is. So I, I appreciate it, I don't want to go on and on, but maybe I already have. So I appreciate all, you've done a real nice job of answering questions and, and representing this, and I appreciate, you know, your commentary, so.
Mr. Larry, do you have any questions for?
How many years, how many generations has this property been in the, in existence?
Well, it was, it was, Gordon, do you want to?
My great-grandfather, I don't know what the history is before him.
So Civil War.
Cliffords, or, or in eighteen sixty-four.
So when it was transferred down, like, for example, like your great-grandfather, how much did he pay to your grandfather for that property? How much? Or great-great-grandfather?
Our, our grandfather, our great-grandfather owned the farm across the road, and that's where my grandfather grew up.
Okay.
That farm is gone, and there's nobody in the family located there anymore, west of Auburn Road. Our grandfather, our grandparents, as a young couple, bought this farm.
And then, did your father then buy it from them?
Um, yes, it was on the mother's, our mother's side, and yes, father.
And then you guys bought it from your father?
We inherited it.
Okay.
Our dad died young, our mother was pretty foresighted, and she set up a farm trust program.
So you guys didn't have any initial dollars out to actually buy the farm, when you, you basically got it in a sense of free and clear?
Yes.
Now, what's more important to you? It seems like the farming is really a big issue, are you, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, listening to your father and to you, farming is the, is the key thing. And is, so, so is it the money, or is it the farming? What would you say is the priority?
It's the farming. If we wanted the money, we would, we'd develop it.
Okay, because, because I guess it seems like there could be a win-win here, because if it's, the farming is the priority. I mean, I don't know what, what all you guys are going to get from doing this program, but, you know, it's, it seems like there's a, there's a fear of, of, of losing this property for farming, but whatever happened to a deed restriction that you could put on that property privately? And you can pay, if you, if, if your father or you want to buy the property, pay Gary, and then you own it free and clear. And you put a deed restriction for, for whatever you want yourselves, and you never have, you never have to worry about that, and you protect it. I, I loved, I, I live right around the corner from that place, you know? I constantly look at, I watch, I saw the geese on the, on the pond that's on that property every day, I see what ducks come in at different times of year, so for me, I love it, absolutely love it. Do I like what Western Reserve's land conservancy control is in this, in this county and abound? No. And I think that there's a lot of, there are a lot of things that I'm not going to get into right now, but I, I think that, I agree with you guys a hundred percent, but as far as, you know, what, what Skip is saying, I, I have to say, I agree with a lot of that control, and, and I, I don't agree with that control. And I think that, you know, it's a situation where you guys don't need anybody to do this. You could, you're an attorney, you can go to the county today and draw up the papers to put a deed restriction that that will never be changed.
Yeah, well, and part of.
Correct? Correct or not?
Well, I'm, I'm not a real estate attorney, but that's not my, that's not my area of expertise. And part of the issue is that they, in order to, in, in order to, to do the succession plan for the farm and for this land, Gordon does need to have an economic benefit from this, and this program provides that, it gives us an opportunity to do.
But he'll be able to farm it, and he'll be able to get an income, you know? That's, that's the other thing that's always, let me ask you a question, because I'm not a, I'm not a farmer, and I don't know enough about farming to tell you, but let's say, for example, an acre of hay, what does an acre of hay produce net for, for a year, in, in profit?
Well, a hundred and fifty bales per acre, times four dollars per bale, six hundred dollars.
Six hundred dollars, gross?
That's gross.
Gross. So, so this is always the, the fear, is that, I, I think that there's always, the, the fear is this, is, and it's something you've got to really think about, because he'll be passed away, we'll all be passed away, possibly even your grandkids will be passed away at the time that this is a concern, but it's a concern, because under the CAUV, you have to continue to farm it under their requirements. When does the property get to the point that the actual profits off of that farming will actually be able to cover what the taxes are? Who knows what Munson taxes will be in a hundred years from now, in a hundred and fifty years from now? You put that property into that position, you will never be able to, you can't, we cannot say today what a hundred and fifty years from now, you know, is. And, and I'm sure that you could, you know, you can look at it yourself and look back and say, you know, go into Willoughby Hills, go into Mayfield Heights, go into a lot of those areas, who would have thought in twenty-five years, things changed the way that they changed, and look the way that they do? So I guess, my, my point that I'm trying to make is that it scares me to have something locked up, because what happens when your generations ahead of you get put into this position? But in a situation where, you know, the whole thing with this whole conservation easement and, and being able to farm it, I'm with you a hundred percent, love the idea, it's just, you could do that amongst yourselves.
We can't necessarily do that amongst ourselves, because we don't have the money. We're not, you know, this isn't, my, my dad has been a farmer his whole life, this isn't a situation where, where we have a lot of, you know, flexibility in that way, and, and Gordon has a, has an interest that has to be, has to be acknowledged and recognized, and that has to happen within a timeframe. And the state has provided a way for farm families, I mean, this is a family farm, for farm families to, to address just that sort of situation. And here it is, the State of Ohio has, has put this in front of us, and just put the commissioners in the position to say, go ahead and make that application, because, and the commissioner's role, as I understand it from looking at the program, is to say, is this a property that would make sense to have as farmland, to have as farm property? You know, it's not in the middle of a commercial development or something like that. And with Munson Township clearly and enthusiastically saying, this is, this is perfect, this property is just right.
I, I agree with you, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Then what the commissioners would be doing, if, if you don't go ahead and give us the okay to do this, is depriving farmers in Geoghegan County from an opportunity that farmers in every, across the whole state have, to go ahead and, and do something with their farm that is directly related to their, their needs and their desires and their private wishes to keep family farms, family farms. And if, if, if Geoghegan County isn't supportive of that, then Geoghegan County isn't supporting Ohio farmers in the way that other, other counties are. And that's, that's something that, you know, I think, I, I, I do believe, and I, I, I just can, can see, that you do support agriculture. So this is a way to do it in a particular case. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, you know, related to all those other things, we, we can, we can not speculate and plan for every single thing, but we can use this program to create a, a opportunity for family farmers in Geoghegan County to keep their family farm and, and keep it moving. And they're not, they're not necessarily going to be able to do that without the help of some funding. That's, it is, there's an economic interest that, that goes to our primary interest of farming. If we can't keep it in farming, and this, this is why Mayfield looks like it does, this is why Willoughby Hills looks like it does, because family farmers have said, well, I can't, I can't keep it far, in farmland, because the best value I can get from it is to sell it for development. So it goes ahead, they go ahead and they sell it, and they sell it for development, and then the farm doesn't exist anymore. And if we allow that to, to just, if we don't use this, programs like this, that have just that little bit of a restriction, that we're volunteering to assume, farmland disappears. This is a way for Geoghegan County to promote that, and Munson does, I mean, in my lifetime, they could talk about their lifetime, but in my lifetime, the farmland and the farms in, in Munson have gone precipitously down, and continue that. We don't, we, we can't just, and this is an opportunity.
So Gary, as far as for yourself, you know, you had stated that you, that the farm was inherited, let me ask you, I mean, what do you believe is priority? The dollars or the preservation?
This is Gordon.
Oh, Gordon, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought you were just me. I value the preservation.
So with that being said, it, it was passed on to you, why couldn't you just decide to put that into a deed restriction to protect that property forever?
Well, here, here is my thinking on this, and Mr. Claypool, I'm going to share this with you. I'm very much where you're at politically, philosophically, I understand where you're coming from, and I have really wrestled with this issue personally, as we've made, made the decision that brings us here today, which is relevant to your question. I'm seventy years old. Biblically, I've lived out my life expectancy, you know, three score and ten.
Seventy's the new fifty, just pointed that out.
That's good.
I'm approaching that myself.
So, if I live to be ninety, and we haven't done anything, Gary and I own the sixty acres in a farm trust, we did some negotiating to get our two sisters out of it, just to simplify things for future dealings. Well, that's what they wanted, was to be out.
Okay.
And the house that you see, my sister Paula owns seventeen acres there, and that's not.
Being part of that, right.
That's her private property. So, as I shared, I've basically since, been out of the area since college, my children are all over the place, military, and probably none of us are ever going to come back here. So I'm trying to decide, or I'm trying to prevent what's happening, is what we've seen happen with other family, i.e. across the road, and neighbors. My wife and I passed, then suddenly, we have eight grandchildren to divide up sixty acres, or my four kids, and I, what will, what will their share of the, I, I don't want the situation to come where to settle up the farm with Gary's family, my family insists that we sell the farm so they can get their share out of it. I see this easement potential as a tool to help me pass my share of the farm to Gary's family to preserve it, to keep it in agriculture usage, without putting my kids in the situation to, they don't have, they aren't going to have the attachments that I have to, they may, they aren't going to. aren't going to care if the farm gets sold perhaps to a sub divider to get their share of the inheritance out of it. I would rather have a vehicle now that Gary and I can work through, and this is a tool to help make that possible, where I can have some, what would you say, estate planning to pass a reduced share of the farm to, to my kids without it having to be, having them, put them in a situation where they're going to have to work with Gary's kids and sell it in, say, twenty years.
And selling it with that many people involved really means selling it to the highest bidder.
Yeah, but this doesn't mean, I'm still confused. You guys have complete control of the situation. You don't need state taxpayer dollars, which is what this is about. You want to have subsidies to help you to keep the property. Let's just be honest about that. And so, because that's what the agricultural program is about. Now, farmers exist a large on subsidies today to NCS and others, and, you know, that's a whole conversation we can have for another day. But you guys are in complete control of what happens with this farm. If you walk out of here, let's say that this is just approved today, you make a decision whether you're going to stay farming or you're not going to stay farming. That's your choice. It's, it doesn't involve anybody. You can decide to gift your property to Gary and, and the farmer's hole, and it's, it stays in farming and so on and so forth. So this program is not required in order to make this happen. It helps, it makes it easier. I mean, you have some funding involved and so on and so forth. I don't know what your fiscal situation happens to be. But that's really kind of what it comes down to. It's, it's a financial decision, not a choice decision. And I want to separate those two because you're making it sound like if we make that decision, we don't like farming and, and we're going to destroy your farm. That's not happening. You guys are in complete control of this situation.
Well, that, that's, that's, that's true. And, and there is, it is a financial decision that we're making. I mean, there, there is this program available, available that will, could help us do this transfer. Yes, we're interested in that finance. A question about the deed restriction idea, would, would not that be putting the same restriction on it into the, into the distant future that, you know, that's-
Right, but you control it.
We control it, but each landlord does.
Well, it's all, it all depends.
It goes with the-
And that's something, I, I'm not an attorney and I don't claim to be, so it's something you would have to take up with that and with our recorder and, but it's all how you, it's all how you write it up. It's no different than the way the Western Reserve Land Conservancy is going to write, write up a property plan, is exactly how you would write up a property plan yourself. That you could actually put, put your, put your son as the, as a, as the trustee down the road to be able to have the authority to do it. But ultimately what you do is, is you allow to still maintain control. Once you make this decision, you are stripped of all your rights.
But Western Reserve Reserve Bank Conservancy, it's not about Western Reserve Bank.
But they manage the plan.
Every county has a, has a local sponsor.
I understand that, but they manage the plan.
This program is-
They manage the plan.
They manage-
In the deed restriction, you manage the plan. It's your property.
Yes, I do understand it. Although they're managing an easement, an agreement-
They manage your property.
That is set forth by the state.
No, we don't manage property. The property owner is still the private property owner and they manage the land.
But it, but it specified what can be done on that property.
We ensure the terms of the easement, state or otherwise, are, are being upheld. That's what our role is.
As to that particular property, right?
But it's not this.
We have everything else.
It's not this. It's this.
Well, we don't feel that way. As the private, as a private property owner ourselves, we don't feel that. We've, we, and we've looked at it very carefully and we understand it quite well.
I guess my position, in, in, in short, is, is that I, I, I don't feel comfortable to move on a decision today without seeing a completed contract. And, and I, you know, I would, in fairness to us, it's just, I, I can't make a decision today. I, I would like to see a completed contract on what, you know, what, what, what some of those terms are because, to be quite honest, I mean, this thing hit the agenda yesterday, you know, through email, and I probably got three dozen phone calls on this, you know? Because there's a lot of people in the county that are very wary of what happens with Western Reserve Land Conservancy and some of their deals. So, so I, I have, I owe it to the taxpayers to, to look at that and to be able to make a good decision.
I believe, and Chris will correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the, the application has to proceed the agreement. And your position in this as commissioners is to give us the resolution that says you may go ahead and apply, submit an application. So-
So if we don't, if we don't pass this resolution, that's a dead deal. You cannot, you cannot file the application with the-
With the state.
LA EPP.
Yeah.
If, 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 if we don't give our blessing for you to file that application, there won't even be a con, there is no contract.
Correct. There's a sample deed that ODA does provide online that is there, that's the template that they use, they start from. Those spell out the terms of the easement, which is largely, in my opinion, in favor of agricultural uses. It provides for a homestead, it provides for entering into oil and gas leases. It does restrict those to subsurface and not surface because the goal of the program again is to preserve the soils and healthy soils and farmland production.
Now, I also am under the understanding that the monetary compensation on a piece of, on a transaction like this is capped at two thousand dollars an acre, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And the parcel, as I saw the map, encompassed fifty-seven acres? I mean, I've heard sixty bannered around here, but it's fifty-seven acres.
Yeah, we're using sixty.
So if, if the state or through this process, if this generated the maximum amount, it would be a total of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
That's right.
And during the life of this, I mean, from now into perpetuity, that farm will generate whatever the tax values are as calculated by the auditor now and into the future. If, if it's a fair tax value, it, it won't generate for the county any less or any more than it would be if it stays the same as it is now.
Correct.
Yeah. And we do have an April fifteenth deadline in terms of submitting the application. So although, yes, I mean, there is, there is a little bit of time to consider it and we, we-
So, so who is the, who negotiates, let's say that the application was approved, you were moved forward. Who do you work on the contract with? Is that with the state of Ohio, Department of Ag, or is that what questions are-
Both. The representative, and the representative that came and saw my dad and walked the property with him. That's part of that.
So why would Western Reserve have any part if you're just an overseer?
We're a local sponsor. It's the way they set up the program. They rely on the local sponsor. The term, the contractor or the easement identifies the grantor, which is the landowner, a state grantee, which is ODA, and the local grantee, which is the local sponsor.
We're not, we're, we're really not here to make this a political issue.
So we're not either.
We see a way to make it into a, a way for the succession of our family farm to be passed down in a way that the state of Ohio has, has supported, that county schools are supporting agriculture, are going ahead and saying, yes, go ahead. I believe, and you could do more research on this, that would be fine, of course. I believe that the, the purpose of the county commissioner approval is to make sure that the, the land that is being considered for this program is not land that shouldn't be in agricultural use or production. Land that for some reason would not, it would not be sensible and that would not be reasonable to be using that land for agricultural purposes into now and into the future. So if somebody wanted to, for some reason, put an agricultural restriction on a property that's in the middle of town, the commissioners would be able to say, that is not a good idea. But when we have local support that says for this particular project, for this particular property, it's exactly what Munson Township needs and wants and desires. That's what, where Irene Mullen was saying, this is a local control issue. It's a, it's a question of private ownership, private people saying they want to do a particular thing with their private property, and then local control saying, that makes perfect sense to us because it's for the good of the community. And the commissioner's saying, okay, we see this, we see this situation. There's nothing here that gives us reason to believe this property is not a good candidate for the state program that has been established by the state. And go ahead and make your application. And then you have no further obligations. The commissioners have no further obligations in relation to that.
Well, we receive the impacts, long-term impacts of the outcome of this. That's the reason we're having this long, drawn-out conversation today is because there is an impact to the county, long-term impact. It's, it's a private, private individuals are making a decision that will impact our county. And that's part of the reason that we're, we're spending as much time on this. Is there, is there a deal breaker in this, I suppose, view? Is there something that the Western Reserve or the Department of Ag would say, this is what we want to put in your contract? And you would say, no, we, we won't take this contract with us?
We should, sure there is. I mean, if they, if they put unreasonable restrictions on it, we would not do it.
Have you, have you drafted a set of T and Cs, terms and conditions that you think are a starting point?
We've reviewed a twenty-page state, what, template and didn't see anything in there that wasn't reasonably acceptable to us within, you know, both now and for the long term. Are there, are there deal breakers? There could be. I haven't seen anything in that template that looks like there would be. But obviously, we're not going into this blind, and you've helped us understand a lot of the long-term concerns.
But, but, I mean, he's an agricultural extension, has a degree in-
Foreman.
Yeah. I mean, foreman, of course, yeah. But has a degree in, in a very squarely related field. And he's been a farmer his whole life and has a degree in wildlife management. And they are looking at this and saying, I don't see any, any issues related to, to farming or related to restrictions on farming. And in fact, when, you know, my dad walked through, he just didn't see, the, the person that he was working with just didn't cause him any concern whatsoever. Because they're, they're looking at good farming practices, which we know how to do and they understand. And so together, there's no, there's no cause for concern. If there was, if, if somebody, whether whoever, the, the state, the WRLC, if somebody put something in there that was, was unduly restrictive, they would know how to object to it.
You know, the only frame of reference that I have, because I, I've read the sample, see what's in the sample, and we've talked about that.
Yeah.
Like, I do have the frame of reference of the Weeden Farm. And so if I read their contract, I'm sure the Weeden's at the thought, said, or at the time said, oh, this is pretty reasonable. We could live with this. Because their existing farming practices, what they did was within that framework. Now you shouldn't run, you sell that property. I, as a farmer, would buy that piece of property saying, oh, wow, this is pretty overly restrictive. Because I can't put in another barn. I might want to expand my hanging operation, or I might want to put in dairy cows. This, this conservation plan was created for soybean farming. And so now you've constrained that property for whoever might pick it up, for your kids or whatever the case. So based on today's thinking, tomorrow's situation may change. And so what isn't a problem today could be a problem tomorrow. And, you know, again, back to Ralph's comment, if I was farming today, I'd love to farm. I tried to talk my wife into it, she wouldn't let me. But I would give myself the maximum amount of control over that property because that's the only way you can compete in the marketplace today when things are changing and markets change and all that kind of stuff. So anyway.
I think on a very pragmatic basis, we've been talking a lot of philosophical things, but on a very pragmatic basis, we see this, I see this, we see this as a tool that provides part of the finances that allows me to pass my share of the farm on to Gary and my nieces and nephews and still be fair in the estate settlement as I think my mom would have liked this to, to me and my four kids. You know, I like these guys, I like my nieces and nephews, but I don't want to give my inheritance to them. So this provides, it probably, it is a beginning to make it possible for us to have a estate transfer and keep it within the farm community. So, yeah, there's a pragmatic financial issue involved in it.
But would you, would you mind if we, per Ralph's suggestion, step back and went over that contract a little bit more detail?
Well, except there is no contract at this point in time.
You've got the state, right?
You've got the state easement. Is that what you're-
Yeah, well, there's, there's a contract. There's a sample contract online.
We, I think you had a, when we met with you.
Sure. And so we could go over that and, and take a look at what Ts and Cs you might be in there. So we could be comfortable that it wouldn't be over some, overly burdensome on the county with the long-term impact is. I mean, again, I'm thinking about the long-term.
Yeah.
I'm looking at all the conservation easements, not just yours, and what the long-term impact is going to be on this county. And I, and I don't like what I see. Now, I know there are a lot of people who are making personal decisions. They make a, you know, one-time personal decision which benefits them without thinking about the big picture. But I'm looking at the whole county. Fact is, I'm in the process of producing a map right now that covers every conservation easement in Geogee County. And, and I've got a, I've got an existing map with every protected piece of property in Geogee County. So I've got all the acre property, all the park property, both township and county, and our easement property and all that kind of stuff. The map is, is quickly devolving into a world of non-private property.
They could make a personal decision to, to sell their land for top, top dollar to a developer, which would be good for them and their self-interest now in terms of their monetary interests.
But that's why we respect them so much.
It would be bad for the county in the future and bad for Munson Township in the future because there would be no further agricultural or open land for-
No, no argument. We respect them here. I do. I, I really do.
In fact, as we, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, this has been a very helpful conversation for me to get my head around some things that I hadn't thought about. And, and you do an excellent job, by the way. I don't know what kind of attorney you are, but you're a good attorney. So-
Along the line of the, the, the land being locked into agriculture and what will people in the future, how will that affect the, the owners of that property in the future? I don't know if that will be our family. But I have confidence that that will, if that is farmland, it is required to stay under CAUV. And, 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 you know, CAUV a hundred years from now may be something different, but I think, or we don't know what. But I think that the people, the owners of the, of the land, since it needs to be farmed, will work that out. Only people interested in farming will own that land. No one else would want it. And they'll work that out. They'll say, okay, well, and they'll work it out. It will be, that problem will, will, I can't solve that problem for a hundred years, but it will be solved. Yeah, every-
So let me ask you a question.
As, as the time passes, they'll solve that.
And maybe this is something for Western Reserve. So, you know, what, what happens in a scenario where, you know, under CAUV and under the requirements that it has to be farmed? What happens if, you know, forty years from now, he's at an age that he can't farm it anymore?
Well, I'll certainly be there. They have the right as private owner to sell the property. As Gary has said, they can sell it to another farmer.
But, but what I'm seeing is, what happens, what happens if he can't farm it?
As far as CAUV, you're like, if, well, we could lease it to someone who would want to farm. And that would keep it in CAUV status.
Okay, but as, as time goes on and it becomes, you know, I, and, and I think that this is, I mean, this is good conversation because these are realities. None of us in this room can, can, can predict what happens down the future, but there's a certain cost to be enabled to farm, to bring equipment out, et cetera, et cetera. So when you lease it, and let's say everything else in Geogee County has now grown into urban sprawling development, who are you going to get to come down there to do farming? To be the, to, to handle the trans, transport of equipment and all that?
My, my thoughts on that are that, no, we're not going to get somebody to come with a big- a big disc and a big plow and a big combine and plant weed or soybeans or corn. Munson Township needs vegetables, they need things that people can, small farms can do. 20-acre farm, a 10-acre farm, a 50-acre farm can produce. They'll be producing those kind of things that are very easy for anybody to move in there and produce.
My sister has 17 acres and she does chickens and sells eggs.
A small-
And keeps it in CAUV for that.
A small haying operation is fine. That is easily done by, on, on a small level like that. There's all kinds of, no, we're not, I, we have never, I've never been interested in the grain farming. We're not that kind of big farm, no big tractors, no big equipment. Small, small stuff, get the, get the work done. I don't envision needing to, to lease it to somebody who wants to plant corn or oats or, or corn or soybean. It's, it's people who would be planting just local crops that, that, that the community needs. And the biggest would be probably hay.
And maple syrup. Maple syrup is, is a way to keep it in.
But I think, I think, small people, I mean, small farmers would get that job done. They would be able to continue, whether it was our family or the neighbor.
Or an Amish family from Middlefield who's interested.
Local, local people would be able to get that done if we can't. And it would, and they would be producing, producing, they would have production that would, would be, that could be paying tax on. The, the production is going to produce revenue, not just the, not just property.
And I have some, some are jobs, every, I mean, that's how I, I, in fact, I was in 4H and I, I had a dairy cow and I sold the milk to the Sisters of Notre Dame and I paid for a part of my college because of that. You know, th- those pieces of the economy are, are critical too. And, and the diversity of the economy in Munson Township is something that Township has recognized. And here we are today, just asking you to give us an opportunity to submit an application. That's, that's it, that's the assignment.
But the place is, is just, just perfectly suited to very small production.
Yep.
This person do that, this person do that, out the door.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry to the public for taking so much time. But you can understand how important this is to us.
Thank you, thanks for, for keeping me.
So do we want to have a motion or do we want to set aside?
Yeah, we could set aside, yeah, that sounds good. So, yeah.
So you're going to take that until next week?
Has to be done next week. On the 29th.
Ninth.
Or it's not going to be done at all.
Correct.
In the cycle.
That was my question, I think, reviewing the con, template contract, as you've done for the other guys, that's a good idea. Will you be able to make an up or down decision by the 15th?
Well, I mean, it's too- You need to apply by the 15th. How long does that process take? I mean, you've got to have an answer from us before then, don't you, to prepare your application?
Yeah, I mean, we're sort of in the process, but we've got other farms we're working on too. And of course, when we have decisions, those get prioritized. So, that gives us what, two weeks if the decision-
Do those farms not have to come through yet?
Not through, they're different counties, not through Jogger County. Well, like I said, we serve 17 counties. It's, we've got a number of farmers that are approached.
The program doesn't end because we don't make the cycle, but it's April 15th cycle. The Department of Agriculture program is in place. It's been in place for a number of years. So it goes through these cycles of, of a lot of money and so on and so forth. This is not an only opportunity. I'm not saying that we shouldn't look at this and try to get it done in that timeframe, but it is not an end of the world situation either. But I, at least I will commit, if you want to sit down this week and go over that contract, spend some time with you and kind of go over the Ts and Cs. Again, I've, I've read, this is only a portion of the, the easements that I've been reading. And so, we can take a look at that. I don't know what the other two commissioners' time is or what their thoughts are, by the way.
If we can just have a, another week here will be good.
Okay, next Tuesday then.
Yeah.
And you don't, you don't all need to come back to send your attorney.
I'm not, I'm not turning on this one.
He did, he did a nice job, he did a nice job.
I'm actually the principal of a high school.
Oh, you're the principal of a high school? But you are a lot, you have a lot of degrees. Which high school?
Montessori High School at University Circle.
Ah, very good. You might know my daughter. Wendy Berkey, you know her? She's a school social worker, right? Interesting. So, do we need to have a motion on it or?
Not, we're not going to vote on something, we don't need a motion. There's a just reflecting, a table to-
Table that's all my magic.
Gary, Gordon, why don't you give me a call after this meeting? And then we can set the time.
I'd like to, yeah, to, if I can.
Chris's comment was if this April 15 deadline is missed, it kicks the can down the road for a full year.
Okay.
And, and we are doing, I mean, as Gordon described, they're, they're working actively to, to make estate plans and to resolve that situation.
Yeah, we won't delay.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks to Alma.
Thank you.
You guys have questions for the White Conservatives too? I'll give me a call. Thank you.
Are you over in Ashen?
Um, in Moreland Hills there. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we have this telephone number? Yeah, I went off to the article.
Morning, John.
Morning, George.
I'll keep you more than a couple hours. It's okay, it's okay. Item number four on the agenda is the approval of an execute. Change order number one is final for the substore structure. There is an, an error on the, on the agenda, it's probably my fault at the beginning, but it is a, the change order is correct, but the actual change is an additional $4,906.70. It's a difference of $8, so that's probably my fault on the actual request, but the change order that you are signing is correct. So.
Okay, so.
The change order itself is correct. It, I just missed that $8 in the, in the deduction column, so it does-
It's a 906 or 90?
Yeah, $4,906.70.
906.
Yes.
Okay.
And that dollar amount is for some additional base stone that we put in, that we need to strengthen to fix the wet spots.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, final increasing the contract with Miller Builders LLC for the construction of a substore structure located at 12665 Merritt Road, Chardon, Indian Mall, $4,906.70.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Rayer?
Aye.
Mr. Flippel?
Aye.
Item number five is, requesting the board approve and execute easement for highway purposes with Mr. Richard Kristoff in connection with the Parkman Alley vacation. This takes place prior to the condition of the alley in order for him to grant an easement to the commissioners for the turnaround.
Okay. Then we only have one more step after this.
One more step. It's going very well.
Any other question? The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute an easement for highway purchases between Jogger County Board of Commissioners and Richard C. Kristoff in connection with the vacation of the unnamed non-numbered road in Parkland Township included parcel 25-19709 Vacated Norton, 0.0, I guess it's 0.04 acres. Number 25-190066, 0.011 acres. 25-05600 for a total of 0.16 acres. Inversionary parcels to be granted upon vacation of the alley, 0.07 acres south side, 0.007 north side for a total easement area of 0.045 acres in the amount of $1. Yes, all that for $1.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Rayer?
Aye.
Mr. Flippel?
Aye.
Mr. Flippel?
Is this the contract or?
Yes, that's the easement. So I will double check the, the numbers. I think there's a couple extra zeros in there.
I was going to say, yeah, it looked like-
Went on the, on the agenda. So I will make sure that when I do the motion that, that the easement numbers are correct. I will make sure that the 0.07 numbers are correct and the version unfinalized.
Commissioner, have a call.
Thank you.
Yes. You can have a call. Thank you. So what percentage of salt did we not use in the plan? We used about 10% of what we were looking at?
It's a question I don't really have any numbers for. There's about 6,000 or something in the building right now, somewhere closer minus. So, nowhere near what he was asking.
Cool. Just allows us to pile that up there, save money.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Bye Andy.
David.
Morning.
Morning.
Que pasa?
I took German in college.
This is, he, he's the most. You're marked.
Can you get a shirt to your hat?
You are.
Thank you. The first one, I think, is Gates Landing in Bainbridge and EDDM LLC, LLC is the owner. That's actually Pain in Pain. They just put the property in this LLC. And Howard Sealing Associates is the surveying engineering firm. And Gates Landing is on the north side of Flintlock Ridge. It's about 1,000 feet east of Shrin River Road in Bainbridge Township, of course. And Flintlock is the main east-west right-of-way to Ghost Creek and Lake Subdivision. We approved the Gates Landing subdivision, as you can see on this map on the first page, on August 12th of 2014. And then I was approached by Pain in Pain, they wanted to consolidate these two lots into one. And we, there are two ways to go with a consolidation, a subdivision. Vacate and come back through with a new survey or replat. And they decided to replat because there are other issues involved here that I'll show you in a moment on the next page. But we did approve this at our last planning commission meeting. It's not as if these two lots are unbuildable. They are, but the buyer of these lots, he wanted to build a larger home, the footprint just wouldn't work out. That's all really, really is the bottom line of this thing. So, he wanted a larger parcel. And you can see on the next page here, sublot 16, as it exists of record today, is .23130 acre. And number 17, adjacent to it, is .30428. So the total area in what we would then call lot 16A would be .53558, about a half an acre. And the frontage about 122 feet on Gates Landing Drive, which is a private real estate, by the way. Part of what we're also doing here, you can see a shaded area about in the center of the parcel. That's the existing storm sewer easement of record. And again, because of the footprint of the proposed house, we don't want the house within that easement area of record, of course. So we're, through this plat, vacating that storm sewer easement and relocating it along the, the easterly boundary line of the parcel. Again, it's kind of a shaded area there, you see. So, again, this is kind of a combination of vacating and relocating storm sewer easement and consolidating the two lots of record. Zoning is met, the sewer water connections are in, there's a note, the road is built, it's private. And again, we did approve this at our last meeting. So, that's the gist of the issue at hand.
The planning commissioner is requesting the board approve and execute the replat of Gates Landing subdivision, sublots number 16 and 17 in Bainbridge Township.
Make the motion. Second.
Mr. Rayer?
Aye.
Mr. Flippel?
Aye.
So you can all back up and go down.
Can we look at this one over to our last meeting?
Yes.
This map looks different.
Okay. Mill Creek subdivision is in Munson Township. And Bill and Betty Conti are the owners of the affected area we're looking at today, sublot 16 and Block A. And the affected area, again, is on the west side of Wellesley Range, just a little bit northwest of Old Duffell. Wellesley is on the south side of Wilson Mills, just west of Talbot. Planning commissioner originally approved this entire subdivision plat on February 14th of 1995. So, you know, this has been around for a while, basically built out. There aren't any vacant lots in here, I do not believe. Mr. Conti approached the planning commission in January of this year and said essentially, you know, this Block A that was reserved for a future road.
I forgot what's on the, on the table.
It's not happening.
I remember this, yeah.
And he said, if I acquired this from the HOA, what would your reaction to the planning commission be? And after we discussed that rather thoroughly at our meeting and talked to the zoning inspector in Munson, the trustees in Munson, the adjacent property owner to the west, other affected property owners, obviously, within the subdivision. It was determined that Block A, the planning commissioner gave Mr. Conti the green light to take title to Block A from the HOA, which he did. And then consolidate Block A with his existing sublot 16. And further vacate the existing utility easement on the south side of Block A. In other words, poof, Block A is going to be gone forever when we get this approved today and recorded. Existing sublot 16 is about three and a half acres. Block A is about seven tenths of an acre. And so 16- Uh, and so sixteen A, the new sub lot consolidated, will be four point two two six four acres. And this will also increase, uh, Conti's frontage on Wellesley, uh, and will make it three hundred and twenty-three point five feet. Well, and, uh, the formative zoning. You can see the footprint of his existing home on the, on the page in front of you. No issues with setbacks, the sepic is installed, it has been for some time. Again, we're not changing anything regarding the building site or the building dwelling area, I should say, excuse me, and the accessory structures or anything of that nature. Again, just to consolidate block A with sixteen and vacate that utility easement. We also had a utility easement granted along the westerly side of Wellesley, and kind of a slashed line you might see there on the map. So we closed the gap here on the road right-of-way with regards to the utility. So. Any questions?
The planning commission is requesting the board approve and execute the replat of Mill Creek subdivision, sublots number sixteen and block A in Munson Township.
Make them motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spiller.
Aye.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Um.
Who is it?
Yeah, just quick.
The sheriff's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the application for authorization to permit use of credit cards for ORC 300270 to be the maximum amount of one thousand dollars per month for DMC, Paul and Scott Riehl, and the other employees, and Kathy Arose, John Siskat Jr., Christine Tendy, Nancy Carroll, Mitchell Kelly, James Fowles, James Hardlett, and Tyler Loeb.
Make them motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spiller.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Mike. Okay, number nine on the docket. Uh, I had a new position and job description for budget officer in the transit department. It's called Budget Officer Two. And I assigned level twenty-two oh four to it and make that a grade nine to be effective on the twenty-second. And you'll see what the judge's view is of subs and what we can follow with that.
We have, we have an existing position, Budget Officer, Debbie Ashburn, our office Budget Officer, uh, because Kate Wiberg down transit handles grants, works with the annual FTA grant, also does test, uh, work with QuickBooks and news, as well as New York. A little more complexity to the job, so we thought it was appropriate to create a Budget Officer Two position and move it up a step.
So do you want to do nine, ten, and eleven together, or do you want to do it second?
Do we have any events here?
Nope, they're all related.
Let's do them all together.
Okay. The transit department is requesting the board approve a new position and job description for Budget Officer Two, number twenty-two oh four, to a grade nine to be effective March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen. The transit department is requesting the board approve revised organizational chart to improve the position of Budget Officer Two, number twenty-two oh four, to be effective March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen. The transit department is requesting the board approve the promotion of Kate Wiberg to the position of Budget Officer Two, number twenty-two oh four, to be effective March twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, at the rate of nineteen dollars fifty-three cents per hour, grade nine, step four, with a one hundred eight day probationary period.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spiller.
Aye.
Mr. Clifford.
Thank you. Sorry for keeping you awake, but we're very interested in what a lot to say.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
There will be a Tesla.
Okay.
Come on up, ladies. How are you?
How are ya?
Good morning.
Sorry, waving a sign.
That's fast.
How are you doing? Haven't seen you for a while.
Still here, or he's still there? I'm thinking I'll have to fire that one. So, and so as fine counsel on any returning issue.
Cindy Dunn, President of the Jacksons, and also South Franklin Circle.
So it's your shot?
Okay. We have a kind of your resolution that indicates your interest in issuing refunding bonds. The county issued, and I'll talk just a little bit about the bonds themselves, but any specific questions with respect to the facility or the financing plans and the expert. But the county issued about one hundred and fifty-five million dollars bond in two thousand and seven. Uh, there was a refinancing of that in two thousand and twelve. A report of financial of those where, um, the county's bond issuance went from a hundred and fifty-five million to forty million, refinancing. And then there were other investors who purchased some of the other outstanding bonds and refinanced them. And then there were also some, some banks that were gone, some of the outstanding, not bond buyers, but banks. I didn't even mention that. Of the forty-one million dollars of refunded bonds that the county issued, ten million of that has been paid off since two thousand and twelve. And so the, um, Andy, South Franklin Circle is now in position for financial stability. Do they have the ability to sell bonds on marketplace to sophisticated investors? So they want to refinance some of the debt held by banks currently and refinance that, have it held out in marketplace where they get an advantage of now having that remarkable debt. So they expect that to be just under maybe seven million dollars, up to seven million dollars, as I expected now. So the total amount of debt would be thirty-one million dollars plus the practically seven million that would be issued here. And it's payable only by South Franklin Circle, not payable by the county. And this resolution is the first step, it's an intent. There's not a public hearing that has to happen. There's also a resolution that for a while, that would like to follow also in perhaps late April. That would be, just so you understand what the full process would be. Approving the actual final form of the debt and the related security documents. This is entered into at the beginning because there's a lot of paperwork that has to be prepared on that and to make sure that the county's on board. And it's, it's sort of an intent to now go forward, subject to documentation insatisfactory and all that. So it's in a form identical to the form that was before you backed in two thousand and twelve. That's what the bond issued on. If there are any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer. But if you have some questions about the state of the facility and their overall needs and things, I'm sure so.
I think we've exhausted, I mean, we had many, many conversations. And Chris Hitchcock looked at the finances on it, and he's given us his blessing and so on and so forth. So I don't really have any questions. I think you guys were coming out. I think you guys are doing a good job.
We're very proud of what we're doing right now, having our experience here.
What is the occupancy rate of that facility? I know, I have an aunt that lives there named Emily Blake in the room.
Currently, we are eighty-eight percent, then includes a hundred and fifty-four, seventy-six percent are actually occupied. And then twenty-one reserve for the ten percent deposit on the process assignment. So we're almost there.
So if you operate quickly, you can get in. She's gone all winter, maybe she'll lend me the key. It's a nice facility out there, right? I got through it, so.
Very proud of it, very proud of it.
How many employees do you have there roughly?
Roughly maybe seventy-eight, eighty FTEs, all kinds of folks.
That's great. And new jobs here.
That's great. And we have a number of Bainbridge folks that, per our agreement, that go to school, which is also very nice.
And are these individually or together?
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute a resolution number sixteen, have zero three five authorizing an agreement to issue self-supporting revenue bonds to refinance outstanding indebtedness related to facilities of South Franklin Circle and conducting a public hearing. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute an agreement between the county of Ohio and South Franklin Circle in regards to the issues of self-supporting revenue bonds to refinance outstanding indebtedness relating to the facilities of South Franklin Circle.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spiller. Mr. Clifford.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. I second the motion, this has been a very informative one.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the delay.
No, it was, it was just, thank you.
Yep, I know.
Excuse me, before we go to some pro forma stuff, could I follow up on an issue from an earlier meeting? Ed Bockes.
I'm sorry?
I could, I follow up on an issue from an earlier meeting before we go into the pro forma, last three items?
You got a question to ask?
Uh, at an earlier meeting, about two weeks ago, there was a discussion about the USGS water survey in the county, and you indicated you were going to set up a meeting having to do with reviewing that process. I haven't found anyone at USGS who is familiar with what's going on. Could you clarify that, please?
Sure, Martha, whatever her last name is.
Julie Keen.
Sure. Julie is on vacation, she's out until the fifth. And in which case she's gonna come back, I've left her messages. And then she's the individual to talk to, and when she comes back, we'll start a meeting.
All righty. Uh, related to that, um, I have some materials that were put together by, um, Blue Lake Green City, having to do with, um, sustainability planning for the county, which would be, very municipality oriented, but there is material here that could be adapted. I think the commissioner should consider a sustainability program for the county.
You know that's a dirty word to me, right?
I, I'm not expecting to bring you into the twenty-first century, but I would like to get you out of the eighteen.
Thank you.
Okay. Number fourteen is just a correction for what you did with the sanctions, I'll hear you second this. The commissioner's office is requesting the board amend the motion from March fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, that we had approved, hiring Anthony McMillian as the deputy director of planning number seventeen eleven to be effective April twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, at the rate of twenty-one dollars sixty-six cents per hour with a one-year probationary period. And further approve and authorize on two eighty hours of unpaid personal leave absolute during the first year, which will extend to this year, period by the equivalent of the number of hours taken as part of the unpaid leave. The date of, his start date has changed and his hourly rate has been reflected due to the change.
To step one.
To step one.
Well, what was in the original motion was a probationary rate, with the change in the policy, it should have been step one. And then, uh, Mr. McMillian, I guess apparently had some commitments that would require some time away, and since he won't have any vacation for the first year, you know, what will typically suggest is that they figure out what they need, and then you guys approve the unpaid leave up to that amount. That way, he doesn't have to come back to you at the time, he needs to take it there from Lawson. I'll make the motion, second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spiller. Mr. Clifford.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board cancel session on Thursday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
Do you want to do both those together, or?
Can. Commissioner's office is requesting the board cancel session on Tuesday, April fifth, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll make those motions, second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spiller. Mr. Clifford.
And then we have additions.
Five.
Five additions, yes. These are merit increases, like you expressed with each of your members here, for five of your employees. And the merit increase is simply a one-step promotion on, on the pay table within the rate, as you recall. You approved moving the rate by two percent, and the policy allows for more consideration of merit increases for people who have demonstrated good performance. So there's five individuals here that have been recommended for that one-step increase.
Do you want to do them individually? Or you want to read them all together and then?
Yeah, I would prefer to read them all together.
Okay. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve a merit increase for senior attendant Cheryl Spitzer to grade five, step nine, fifteen dollars eighty-one cents per hour, on the jog county non-executive, non-bargaining pay table, effective with payroll number seven. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve a merit increase for assistant program administrator Kelly Turner to grade ten, step three, nineteen dollars fifty-three cents per hour, on the jog county non-executive, non-bargaining pay table, effective with payroll number seven. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve a merit increase for human resources specialist Kathy Kat Setler to grade eleven, step five, twenty-two dollars twenty cents per hour, on the jog county non-executive, non-bargaining pay table, effective with payroll number seven. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve a merit increase for operations manager Richard Newsom to grade fourteen, step three, twenty-four dollars fifty-one cents per hour, on the jog county non-executive, non-bargaining pay table, effective with payroll number seven. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve a merit increase for director Glenn Burnick to grade fifteen, step seven, thirty-two dollars sixty-eight cents per hour, on the jog county executive pay table, effective with payroll number seven.
Make them move.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spiller. Mr. Clifford.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I wanted to bring up this veteran service commission issue. I am just a little bit, little bit concerned in the sense of what we can and can't do. I'm not an attorney, never, never claimed to be, so I, my interpretation of the law does not really have any, any sustainability other than having maybe the prosecutor review this, but from, I, from looking at the Ohio Vice Code and what our legalities are, of what we have to do and what we can, what we can and can't do, it appears that, you know, that, that we cannot hold them from giving them this allocation of, of dollars. And I really don't want to get us ourselves into a situation where we have another department to take legal action on us and spend tax fair dollars. And I, I get it, I, I, you know, I just, I, I understand the concerns on both sides. I think that, um, you know, we've got a veteran service commission that's appointed by the common pleas judge of, of the county, and, and they, they make the decisions based on how they're going to run the department. That's kind of our, hands are somewhat tied in a lot of what's going on there. So I don't know what your feelings are for both of the other commissioners, but it's a situation where I don't really feel like getting into another litigation situation and spending more money and hiring more attorneys to do something that looks like we have to do this anyways. And I just think that we may need to just figure out what we gotta do. I, I'm, I'm willing to listen to some input, but, you know, I, I think that this is just, you know, before this starts to, to turn into a dollar snowball, we need to, we need to just melt it and be able to just figure out what we gotta do. Questions or comments?
Let me jump in first of all, I'm a veteran. And I've read the law, I'm not an attorney, however, I do have a mind, as Tom Trump says, might size the basis. But I don't read the interpret, or interpret that law as, um, the veterans administration having free rein. I mean, we are given oversight for a reason, to have free rein without some accountability in how they spend tax fair dollars. I, veterans don't want the veterans administration to get out of control, as we have had on the federal side. They need to be responsible and accountable, they've not spent the dollars we've currently given them. We've never denied them, uh, dollars. We've been trying to work with them to get them a new facility, which, um, you know, we've just been saying, what do you want? So we can help do, for them to justify what they want, and then we can prove it, so. So I think that there's, uh, we need to be met halfway. They need, if they want additional dollars, we're certainly, have never denied them any funding that's reasonable and accountable and can be accounted for. And at this point in time... And at this point in time, they have to go through a process if they want to obtain an attorney that goes through us and having a conversation with us, and I expect that will be done, and if they have merit to their case, we'll have attorneys look at the situation, and then we'll take it wherever, but at this point in time, they need to be rational, reasonable people, and we are. They want to have some, come and tell us what you want. We've met with them to build up their facility down up the way, we've met with them to build up the facility next door, we've met with them to build up the facility in the center of the county, which is what they've asked for. I'm not sure exactly what they want.
I, I don't have the numbers here on some of them either, I think the current appropriation is somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and ninety-some thousand dollars. And again, oh, you have the sheet there? Hey, can I borrow this a second? This is actual. Okay. The current appropriation for this year is four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. The most they've ever spent since two thousand and nine is three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. What's at issue here is they want approval of their appropriation request, which would represent a two hundred and twenty percent increase over what they actually spent last year. Now, there's, the legal issue is regarding the state stipulation that commissioners can spend up to the equivalent of half a mil for veterans relief activities. And again, as board members have indicated, as I've seen my time here, they've never been denied anything they need. There are some counties that go ahead and appropriate that entire half mil. In our case, that half mil would be one half million dollars. Once you appropriate money during calendar year, it cannot be used if other emergencies come up. So I guess, just speaking as a fiscal person, I have a concern where they're really asking for a lot of money to be tied up, and their track record indicates, you know, so far they've never spent more than three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, and they want to appropriate, you know, well more than double of last year's actual spend. So I think, you know, hopefully we can meet with them and reassure them that we, and I'm a veteran, Commissioner Reer is a veteran, that we want to certainly meet any reasonable requests they have. We care very deeply about the veterans, and we want to make sure that we provide them what they need.
But, and, no, I said this in a past meeting when we had a discussion with them, I want to see veterans taking care of it. Money going into a building does not take care of veterans. There recently was a veteran who had a need that was not taken care of. We had to have him go over to jobs for family services, and the veterans could have taken care of him. So I mean, there's some questions that I have, and I would like to reach out to the board and have a conversation with them about this. But again, all they need to do is be reasonable, come with a request that demonstrates what they need and why they need it, and, you know, we're going to, if it's a reasonable request, we're certainly going to take care of it. So that's just my take on it. I don't know why they would threaten with an attorney who never denied them anything. So that's, I think that that's irresponsible to some degree, so that's my take on it.
I hope we spend taxpayer's money helping veterans.
Yeah, I want to take care of veterans. You know, the buildings don't take care of us. How many times do we build a monument to ourselves or to the individuals who happen to be the leaders of that organization without actually taking care of the veterans themselves? So that's, what is the need in Jager County? I don't know, we get some six thousand veterans. What is the real need? And I'd like to hear more about that, so we can actually put the money toward helping vets, you know, they need food, they need job training, they need whatever, we got all kinds of money, we get a gazillion dollars on the federal level going towards vets, we just have to get them to the right place to get them to care of. So anyway, that's my take on it. So I'd like to, I, in planning, making notes, I'm planning on reaching out to the board and having a session with them about it, because we don't need to go in direct to veterans, that's just the way it's going.
And then lastly, the other thing that I would, that I would like to try to focus on is if there's a possibility that we could find out what our legal abilities are of actually creating a newsletter that, that we would be able to submit to, you know, all of the residents of the county. You know, I learned through the campaign process that a lot of people are not informed of what's going on. A lot of people that you would think have internet accessibility really do not. As far as newspapers, they don't, you know, there's a lot of, you know, slanted views, I guess you could say, or opinions that they don't appreciate. I'd like to try to see if we could create, you know, some form of a newsletter, you know, formulate something that I think that in, that we could potentially look to maybe take on a media officer, something, or media official that we would be able to do, that would be able to, you know, report on all of our departments, you know, not just the commissioner's office, but be able to do all of our different departments. And, and I think that as far as the county itself, you know, if we did this the right way, then we would be able to have exposure to all residences in the county, which is approximately forty-two thousand addresses, I believe. And then what we would be able to do is, is offer businesses in the community an opportunity to advertise in those, in that periodical, and be able to have it so that, you know, the costs, the cost to actually taxpayers' dollars could be basically, you know, nothing as far as that is, and that depends.
And where you may have crossed the legal line.
Well, we, we can check, yeah.
But I'm just saying, if it's, so I'd like to try to see if we can, if we can start to do some research on that, to try to, you know, get something in place where we can do that, is, is as far as for, you know, for businesses, to be able to, you know, keep stuff, you know, to get them exposure of being able to do that, every household type of deal, you know, if that's something that we are legally able to do, I'd like to see us try to, try to act on that as soon as possible. And then, you know, as far as our legal notices, all of that stuff, we would be able to probably put that.
Well, legal notices have to go on a paper general circulation.
Okay.
So there's certain, on that, there's some limits, but we'll look into see what is possible.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
You know, and I think that a lot of people don't realize, you know, some of the, some of the programs that we could feature, department managing, department, you know, building department permits, just a whole realm of stuff, that we would be able to have a very nice, well-rounded, unopinionated, factual information out there, you know.
I'll look into it.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.